We're gonna call a meeting to order and although this is an official meeting of the council, we are gonna have a prayer and a pledge take place, so we'd ask that everyone would please stand in honor of our Lord and Savior in our flag. Heavenly and most merciful Father, we ask that you be with us at this time as we continue to conduct the business of this Lafayette Consolidated Government and address the issues and the funding needs of the Parish of Lafayette. We ask special prayers for those who are in the Caron Crow area tonight, trying to recover, trying to make their way to their homes, trying to navigate those floodwaters. We continue to ask for special protections on our first responders and locally our law enforcement officers and our firemen. And we also ask special blessings for all of our constituents throughout Lafayette as they continue to improve upon their own individual qualities of life. These things we ask in so many others in your darling son Jesus' name, amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We welcome you to the Lafayette Consolidated Government's Funding Evaluation Finance Liaison Committee Public Comment Hearing. We as your representatives in the Lafayette Consolidated Government welcome your involvement and encourage your participation. This is a public hearing. If you wish to address the committee on the evening's agenda item, please fill out a blue request to address the council form. The blue form is available to you in the foyer and should be submitted to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle, as soon as possible so that you may be called up for your comments and suggestions. It is important to fill out the blue form completely and fill it out and indicate whether you wish to speak or not. If the form is not completely filled out or is not legible to the clerk, you will not be given the opportunity to speak. If you have materials you wish to submit to the committee, please give those to Mrs. Williams along with your blue form. And I just want to note at this point that you could write in if you'd rather not speak or if you're not comfortable in speaking publicly, you could write in your comments to be made part of the record and those will be provided to the committee. In an effort to allow everyone an opportunity to be heard, the five-minute rule will be in effect. Speakers shall refrain from debating personal attacks and making confrontational or derogatory comments. I'm requesting that the first row to my left be used for me to hear only. And lastly, food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium and all phones and electronic devices shall be silenced from this point forward. I am also requesting that anyone who approaches the committee state their name and title for our official record. Documents related to this hearing, including the agenda and the presentation entitled Lafayette Parish Property Taxes and Evaluation, are posted online at www.lafayette.la.gov. This committee encourages your involvement and participation by volunteers for boards and commissions as well. If you are interested in finding out which board suits your interests, call 291-8800 or pick up a pamphlet at the door. I have a few announcements that I would like to make in addition at this time. Due to the Independence Holiday, the LPUA and council meetings in the months of July and August will be conducted on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, where we return to our typical first and third Tuesdays in the month of September. During a special meeting on Tuesday, August the 1st, 2017, at 5:30 PM, the proposed 2017-2018 Lafayette Consolidated Government Budget will be introduced throughout the month of August. The council will review the proposed budgets of city parish departments, offices, and entities. During the council meeting on Tuesday, August the 22nd, 2017, at 5:30 PM, there will be a public hearing for citizen input on the proposed budget. Overall, the council budget review schedule can be accessed online at www.lafayette.la.gov or by calling 291-8800, and that can be provided to you. Citizens are encouraged to participate in this process. This particular committee consists of four members. As you could see, three of us are here. Councilmember Kevin Nakem represents District 1, is en route and is expected to arrive at any moment. Mayor-President Joe Robideau is in a budget meeting, upstairs actually, but is currently tuning into the hearing to hear the input of the citizens who have come out tonight to share. Also, the committee has received several emailed comments which have been made part of the official record. Number of individuals have been emailing us throughout this process and even those that have come in since we started these meetings back in January. I would like to acknowledge the presence again. This committee is made up of four council members who I'm gonna introduce shortly, but I would like to also acknowledge the presence of additional council members who have come out to be with us tonight. First, from District 8, Councilmember Liz Webb-Aber, and also from District 3, Councilmember Patrick Pat Lewis. So, just to give you a little brief history. In 2016, Jay Castile served as chairman of the council. And prior to him leaving that position as chair, he formulated a committee of council members, which is pretty unique in itself because you have two members who represent the majority residents of the city of Lafayette, two members who represent majority citizens of the Parish of Lafayette, to evaluate the parish's funding, in particularly the needs that exist parish-wide. When he left that position, I had the great fortune of being selected by my colleagues to serve as chair, so I wanted to continue that committee under Jay's leadership. So, what I did, as this council functions with liaison teams, we appoint three members of the council to each department to work closely with them to address issues and other concerns that they may have. I took the three members of this particular committee, along with myself, as the liaison person, and formulated the finance committee for our council. Within the finance committee now exists this Parish Evaluation Needs Committee, which Jay Castile still chairs, along with myself, Bruce Kunk, who's with us today representing District 6, and again Kevin Nakem, who's en route, who represents District 1. Starting in the month of January, we started conducting hearings in our conference room right behind this room, public meetings that were announced publicly, advertised in the media, and we started addressing these issues. In addition to that, we took the opportunity to meet with every taxing authority within the Parish of Lafayette, such as Airport Commission, Lafayette Economic Development Authority, the Library, Bayou Vermillion District, and others, inclusive of the sheriff, the district court judges, district attorney, and others, everybody who's directly affected by this. In addition to that, we kinda got in our vehicles and went on tour. We went to every municipality in the Parish of Lafayette. We went to the council meetings and Scott, Doucet, Caron Crow, Youngsville, and Broussard, and made the presentation that you're going to see some of shortly. And the intent was to be truly as transparent as we could possibly be, be as available as we could possibly be and get to as many locations as we can possibly get to. And the feedback has been good, in fact, and we are grateful for that. And our ultimate goal is to come up with solutions. And this leads us to tonight. After our discussions and in preparation for a possible parish-wide summit, we thought it would be good to give the people of the Parish of Lafayette an opportunity to come and share their thoughts and ideas on how we can improve, correct, and adjust the parish funding to meet the needs of the parish as we know them today and as you're gonna see where we have faced our shortfalls. And that's what we're here for tonight, to get input. To my short life, to my almost 50 years, I have never seen a council choose to have this level of transparency since I've been around. That could be proven to be wrong, but I'll go, I'll just go out and say that, that to simply come and listen to input from citizens at this level, I think this is precedent. I don't think it has ever happened before. Certainly the 10 years that I've been here, it hasn't. In the very short time prior to that, I don't recall it happening. So, I'm encouraged, I'm encouraged by this turnout tonight, and we hope to gather some ideas that we can apply to this upcoming budget that we're about to tackle in going forward into the future. So, with that said, I'm gonna now turn the meeting over to the chairman of this particular committee, councilmember from District 2, Jay Castile, for some comments and ask him to kinda, again, just so you could get really caught up on why he felt the need to do this, and I also want to offer him the opportunity. He represents the area of Caron Crow, along with Councilman Lewis has a small portion of that, as well as Councilman Nakem, but I want to also ask that he address his constituents and just give us any updates he may have as far as the flood is concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Bujrow. Yes, today, Caron Crow and the Caron Crow area got hit pretty hard again. Back in 2012, they were hit with 18 inches of rain in 24 hours, and today they were hit with eight and a half inches of rain in two hours. So, we've experienced some major flooding in the Caron Crow area, in the city limits of Caron Crow, in the unincorporated areas towards Scott, and it's, they're still flooding. The backwater is starting to flood out in the parish, so it's not a good situation out in my district right now. Just to let everybody know that I'm glad more people coming because I knew some people personally that were coming tonight, nine out of 10, they couldn't get out their homes or couldn't get to their homes. So, they having some serious issues up there on the northern end, and I hoping that y'all keep Caron Crow in y'all's prayers tonight, and hopefully this thing will, the water will go down quick and the damages is minimal. I started this committee, like he said, like Mr. Bujrow said, in December of last year. I've been here 10 years and every year seen the parish budget dwindle. There's a couple of times I tried to address it and it was kinda tough to get people on board to discuss it. We have some good council members now who wanna address it. This is not something a politician or elected officials like to bring out, but you know, we indefinitely, we in trouble and I'm not afraid to say it on the parish side. We've held quite a few meetings in the past, not too much turnout from the public, except the little cities that we visited, we did have some people turn out for those. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. We've discussed this at our regular council meetings a couple of times also. We're starting to get input now. This has been going on since January. We have some serious issues with our parish budget. We made some serious cuts in our current budget, cuts that we felt very uncomfortable making, but it had to be done. You'll see in the presentation, we cut 20% across the board. We cut back fire protection in unincorporated areas. We cut the district attorney's office, we cut the judges, we cut everything that was possible to cut. Most of our millages are dedicated, so we really couldn't, we couldn't touch those millages, so we were challenged to figure out what to do with our general fund money, which is mostly sales tax and it's been dwindling every year. This year, the budget coming up, it's gonna be worse than last year. So, I have no idea what Mr. Robideau's doing upstairs, but I'm pretty sure he's pulling his hair out. But we're gonna work through it and we're gonna try to correct some issues and continue to look inside our budget where we can make some cuts and some moves. We have some pretty good ideas that came out from the public, and again, tonight, we hoping that you guys have some more good ideas to share with us so we could kinda weigh everything and vet everything. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Kunk, he has the presentation. It's about 15 minutes long, maybe?
He's gonna just do it verbal.
Oh, you can do it? Okay, Mr. Kunk's gonna take over, he's gonna discuss his presentation, and as you come up, if you have some questions, if we don't answer them right away, we'll answer them because it is recorded and we'll get you the answers at a later date. So, Mr. Kunk, you have the floor.
Well, in the interest of brevity tonight, instead of presenting our normal 15-minute presentation, I'm gonna briefly go over the highlights of that evaluation that we did on the existing property taxes today in Lafayette Parish. And while everyone complains about having to pay too many taxes in Lafayette Parish, the reality is that Lafayette Parish ranks 50th out of 64 parishes in Louisiana in terms of property taxes. If you turn that around, that means that only 14 parishes in the state of Louisiana have less in property taxes than does the Parish of Lafayette. And those parishes that have a larger tax base than we do are those who have invested in themselves and those who are considered to be progressive communities in the state. For example, Monroe, Gretna, Lake Charles, Baton Rouge, Alexandria, Shreveport, New Orleans, and Covington all have a higher property tax basis, but they are identified as progressive communities because they have invested within themselves by assessing themselves property taxes. And one of the issues that the Lafayette Consolidated Government faces, particularly the Parish of Lafayette, is that people think that we get all of that money that we pay in annual property taxes. Well, reality is, we don't. When you look at the breakdown of the $100 that you pay in property taxes, $33.56 actually goes to Lafayette Parish School Board. The sheriff gets $16.79 of that. The library gets 6%. The airport gets $1.68. Assessor $1.44. BBU at Bayou Vermillion District, 92 cents. LCG gets only 28% of those dollars that you pay. We get about 22% to 20% of those dollars, and that's depending on whether or not you live in a city or if you live in the unincorporated area. So, when you look at a graphic about all of this, you're seeing the school board with a huge chunk of 39%. The Lafayette Consolidated Government or the Parish of Lafayette gets 28% of those taxes. The sheriff gets 19%, and the remaining to the other taxing bodies. But when we look at Lafayette Parish obligations, we are primarily looking at property taxes for roads and bridges, drainage maintenance, roads, highways, and bridges, courthouse and jail, what's called a public health tax, which is a health, mosquito, and animal control, the detention correction facility or the jail downtown, and juvenile detention. And you know, Jay referenced earlier and he prefaced our comments on the issues that we're having with stormwater in the parish. Well, in Lafayette Parish, we only assess 3.34 mils for drainage in the Parish of Lafayette, 3.34 mils. And when you look at the percentage of what you pay in property taxes, only 4% of the property taxes that you pay in Lafayette Parish goes to drainage, only 4%. And yet, that is the major issue that we face today in government, is how do we address stormwater runoff? The other thing that we, it's important to note is that every property tax, except one, that's the general alimony tax, has a dedicated purpose. We cannot cross-fund initiatives with taxes. If the library has a fund balance of X amount of dollars and doesn't need it for this year's operations, we cannot take that money and put it in drainage. Because you, the voters of Lafayette, have approved a dedicated property tax, and every property tax that we have in place has a 10-year lifespan. And if you recall, in the prior election, there were two taxes up for renewal and they had, their lifespan is expiring at the end of this year, so we were asking for a continuation of the property tax in place. Every property tax is dedicated, those funds cannot be used for any other purpose. And the other point to be made is that while we pay taxes, Lafayette Parish Government does not get 100% of those taxes, as I mentioned earlier, nor do we get 100% of the taxes allocated to us. We have in place in Louisiana the homestead exemption. You automatically take off $75,000 in exempted funds from the value of your home. So, if I have a $200,000 home, I'm only paying taxes on $125,000. I'm not knocking the system, but that's the way it is. And that is money that does not be, that is not collected, even though there is a property and tax in place. What we did in trying to identify the shortfall, and Jay referenced earlier that we've already taken cuts, this current year budget for the Parish of Lafayette, the current year, we took a $4 million hit right off the top, and we addressed that by making some significant reductions and just outright eliminating some revenue, some expenses. This year, we are projecting another $3 million minimum. Even before we begin the conversation next month on the budget for the next fiscal year, we have identified a shortfall of an additional $3 million. Do the math, we're down $7 million over two years. In the drainage maintenance funds, what we've had is when we have a dedicated property tax that doesn't meet the needs, then you have an inadequate property tax and you have to subsidize it. And that subsidy has got to come from the general fund. When you take it from the general fund, you cut back on the services that you, as a constituency, expect for us to perform, cleaning ditches, repairing potholes, repairing bridges, keeping your roads open, very basic service every taxpayer expects. But when you have a tax, a property tax that's not performing high enough to cover the expense, you have to subsidize it, and that's what's happened. Now, over the years until this year, we've managed to get away with a lot of things through a savings account, our fund balance is what we call it. If we didn't have enough money to cover something, we had a little savings on the side that we could take and we could apply it to the need. Well, that's come to an end. We don't have fund balances anymore. In fact, in this year's current budget for the Parish of Lafayette, we're either at $62,000, I think it is, in our fund balance, overall, $62,000. That's nothing. We can't operate government for more than two weeks with $62,000. So, we looked at four major funds. We looked at, first of all, drainage maintenance, at the top of mind for everybody. We have gone into this year with a fund balance of $908,000, give or take dollars. The deficit was $936, so that means going forward, we don't have enough fund balance to cover what we were covering this year. For that particular fund, we're gonna be short $28,000. That doesn't sound like much, but it begins to be a cumulative effect. We look at roads and bridges. We have a deficit of almost $2 million. We covered it with a fund balance of 1.3. This year, we're gonna shortfall of $620,000, and it gets worse. And remember, the dollars that are shortfall identified will come out of the general fund, and that impacts everything else we have to cover. The big hit that we're taking and a major concern to everyone within Lafayette Consolidated Government is the correctional facility maintenance at five-story jail we have in downtown Lafayette. The jail in the current fiscal year was $4 million in the hole. There was no fund balance, no fund balance. The property tax that is dedicated to the operation and the maintenance of the jail, we don't staff it, the sheriff does. The parish is responsible for operating and maintaining it. The property tax that was in place in 1983 when we had a one-story jail on top of the courthouse is the same property tax today that O&M's, the five-story jail. The other thing that to consider is that jail was built for a capacity of 400 inmates. We have to house, we have to feed, we have to medicate these prisoners. It was built for 400. Today, we have 900 inmates. Trying to do the O&M on the same property tax we had in place in 1983 for a one-story jail on top of the courthouse. So, the obvious question is to ask is, well, if you're $4 million in the hole for the courthouse, where's the money come from if you have no fund balance? When we look at our budgets, we consider the courthouse and the jail as the courthouse complex. So, we can take the monies from the property taxes dedicated for the courthouse complex and cover the shortfall in the jail, and we've done that over the years, but that will come to an end. We covered the shortfall this year. We have a fund balance in the courthouse complex of 630, well, $631,000. But we're gonna have to cover $2.5 billion. That's gonna be the shortfall. So, when you look at the four funds I just identified, that's how we have come up with the figure that going into the new budget, even before we get it from the administration, we are projecting a minimum shortfall of $3 million. And I guess that adds some impact to the argument that it's a major concern to us is that recently, the voters in going to the voting booths said that we are not in favor of renewing the two property taxes. Well, those two property taxes are the taxes that fund the jail and the courthouse, the two most critical property taxes that we have in place. Unless we continue those two property taxes, next year, there will be a significant impact on the budget. We're okay for this coming fiscal year because the tax is in place for the rest of the year, but it expires on December 31st. So, it is critical that we address that issue and we determine how to move forward on that one. So, wrapping up, when you look at everything that we have in the parish budget, it comes down to very basic math. We have an inadequate property tax across the board on just about everything that we do in the Parish of Lafayette. We have to make it up from the general fund. And when you take it out of the general fund, you take away our ability to provide very basic services to constituency. As I mentioned earlier, we had a $4 million decrease from the previous year in the current budget. We're projecting another $3 million, so we're down $7 million over two years. As Jay mentioned, we cut back. Not only did we reduce 20% across the board on everything, I'm not just talking about paperclips and printing supplies, we're talking about real cuts across the board. We also reduced the amount of monies that we give to the volunteer fire departments in the Parish of Lafayette. May not sound like a big deal, but there are 70,000 people in the unincorporated area of Lafayette Parish who do not have adequate fire protection. That is one-third of the population of Lafayette Parish. There is no adequate fire protection. The result of that is, they have higher premiums on their homeowner's insurance, and that is also another issue that we're addressing as a review committee of the property tax situation. Overall, we had to eliminate the parish contribution to the Cajun Dome. Every year, we give a half million dollars, we have, to the Cajun Dome. Half was coming with parish, half was coming from the city. Only the city contributes today, so the parish, the Cajun Dome has suffered because of that, and all external agency grants have been taken out of the parish budget. In conclusion, we're looking at covering at least a million dollars, $3 million this year as we go into the new budget year. We're going to look without a doubt at additional reductions in the general fund expenditures, and we will do what is necessary to balance the budget. Now, I'm sure tonight you will be repeatedly told that if you come up with a solution that impacts only the city of Lafayette, that's not why we're here tonight. You may not use city of Lafayette money, you may not use Broussard, Caron Crow, Doucet, Scott, or Youngsville money to address the parish budget issues. This is an issue that is only the Parish of Lafayette, and that, sir, I think is it.
Thank you, Bruce. I want to make something clear tonight. We're not here asking for anything, okay? We're not asking the public for anything tonight. We're here to hear what you have to say money-wise, ideas we want. We're not asking for no money here right now. You see it, man? But I got that from a council member. But I just want to make it clear again, tonight, we're not here to ask you for anything, we just want solutions, if you have any. There's some things that we're gonna do on our own. We're looking at our current millages that we may possibly be able to combine some, reduce some, who knows at the end of the day what we're gonna come up with. So, there's a lot of different scenarios that we're gonna be looking at on our own, plus what you guys can give us and we can try to vet through. Just to kinda give you an idea of what we look at on a yearly basis in the budget, we collect about $7 million on our drainage fund, our millage. I had Tom Carroll pull before he left to give me five channels in the parish that run through the cities, just to clean them, not to widen and deepen and make them better, just to clean them, five channels, and we have miles of channels. That's $80 million for five channels. And we have a drainage issue in this parish. $80 million to clean these five channels. I mean, it's a serious situation for the drainage part, and something that nobody really thinks about is the bridges. Believe it or not, you cross bridges all day long, you don't even know it, because you don't, you don't really pay attention that you're crossing bridges. I do the same thing. When you go home tonight, count the bridges you cross over to get home or to go visit a family member. 35 bridges right now are ready to close in the parish, 35, shut down. If they start shutting down, this is your route to work, this is your route to your hospital, this is the route the fire trucks take to get to your house. So, that is kind of a hidden thing that nobody pays attention to that needs to be addressed. That's a serious issue. So, we have a lot of things that we're facing in this year's budget and for the future, and I'm hoping tonight we can come up with some good, good ideas. And I'm hoping tonight, we can come up with some good, good ideas that you have. We definitely welcome to that. And I want to say it one more time. We are not here to ask you for anything. So tomorrow, the newspaper, if they interview someone and someone says, well, they're here to raise our taxes, that is not what we're doing. Is the news media here? I want to make sure y'all get that.
No one's here.
Of course, they're not here. Look out tomorrow, field day. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Boudreaux, oh, Mr. Nak, let me give Mr. Nak a chance to say a couple words.
All right. Mike's on, okay. Thank you, Jay, thank you, Kenneth, thank you, Bruce. Sorry, I was running late, running from Alexandria from work. And I did see all the rain and I got all the posts and I got constituents that hit me up on Messenger. And I feel the pain, I mean, I see it, it's real. And 2014, when I was chairman, I put a committee together and they spent about a year and a half studying and looking at the current structure. It was called the Future Funding Source Committee, and we were trying to find ways then, how do we, how do we get ourselves in a better situation? Because it's been coming downhill for many years and I was afraid it was going to get to the point that not only cuts, but services would be having to happen, which means a lot of constituents who are having drainage issues and there's roads and bridges. I mean, I don't, I don't know what to say either. I mean, I'm open to suggestions. Deep down, it's a tough situation. And not only do we need to fix and correct the things that we currently operate, but as they mentioned, the two things that are needed most, we have no revenue source or no millage or nothing for, and that's for fire protection in unincorporated areas. And we don't have a true Parks and Recreation Millage where everyone in the parish participates. So there's a couple of things on top of the things that need to be fixed that we need to start talking about because I don't think it's fair that the city of Lafayette bears the whole expense for the whole Parks and Recreation Department when the fact of the matter is, we're consolidated, but we didn't consolidate Parks and Recreation. And you have a park in other municipalities, and yet it's only the taxpayers of Lafayette that are funding that. So a couple of those things stood out on top of what was addressed here. And I'm just looking for the public to step up and give us your suggestions or ways that you think we could help fix this. Because ultimately, it's our community, it's our investment. We're totally different than the state, we're different than Washington DC. This is our community, this is our investment, this is where our children go to school, this is where we live. And I think it's time that we start looking at ways to better improve our community. Because if we don't do anything and this, this meeting doesn't take place and we don't address these issues, I don't know what the future holds, but it doesn't look bright. So we have to decide as a community, as a taxpayer, as a council, as administration, how do we bring the information to the public and at what point are we going to listen and see what exactly can be done? You know, I don't know, we don't have any answers when, like Jay said, we're not here to talk about money, we're here to figure out ways and get ideas from the public on what do you view as a, as a good way to help reach some of these goals? But the two things that stand out for me is, we have to find a way to fund fire protection in the unincorporated area, and we have to figure out a way to truly help out Parks and Recreation. So that's just my background, that's kind of where I'm coming from. These guys have hit all the points before I got here. I'm just, I just feel as an elected official, you know, and doing my job to bring it and educate the public. I think everyone on here, as a public official in local community, if we had the money, I don't see why any of us would not want to go fix the drainage in Carron Crowe or fix the Parks and Recreation or fix fire. I mean, the truth of the matter is, we got elected to do a job and serve the community, and we're doing it to the best of our ability. But when you have no funds, it's no different than you go home and you balance your checkbook. If you don't have any money, you have to cut or you have to figure out ways. So I think if the money was there, I think you'd be seeing some capital improvements and things moving and, but the fact of the matter is, we doing the best we can with what we got. And sometimes people don't want to hear that, but that's the truth. And I'm open and look forward to hearing what you all have to say. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kenneth.
Okay, all right. Thank you, members. We're going to now get to the people. Again, just in setting the tone for while we're here, Jay coined a term when we first started this process, and I was hoping he would say it tonight, I'm going to try to see if I could do it as good as he did it back then. But we have tried to take on this task of fixing this problem. Previous councils, previous administrations, previous governments had the fortune of, as Bruce indicated, had a very healthy and robust fund balance, and they just depended upon it. Well, Jay said when we first started in January, he said, we have kicked the can down the road. Rather than coming to the people as we're doing here, we just went into the fund balance and we supplemented all of these shortfalls. Well, today, we sit here and in Jay's words, but I agree with him, we at the end of the road and there's no more can. So kicking the can down the road is no longer an option. And that's why we're at this point here today. And I want to emphasize to address parish funding. I'm sure everyone in this room knows, but even with this idea that we have a Lafayette Consolidated Government, if you participate in our budget here, you will see that the city budget and the separate budget is two separate budgets. That's in one book, okay? That's just the facts of it. You know you pay a city tax and you pay a parish tax, and that goes into two different funds. Want to also share with you, they've already talked to you about the number of cuts that have been made. Last year, the administration came off the top in the budget process, 20% across the, across the board. I will tell you, keep in mind, if you're wondering how the parish has kind of depleted its funds, annexation has played a significant part in that. Every time some premium retail area has come up, Ambassador South is a prime example. One of three people grabbed it. Either the city of Lafayette grabbed it, the city of Youngsville grabbed it, or the city of Broussard grabbed it. But it's no longer an unincorporated area, therefore, the parish is no longer the beneficiary of those taxes that are being generated there. So with annexation, the retail has shrunk significantly. And that's why we haven't been able to replenish because it's now going into a city coffer rather than to a parish coffer. Other ideas, if you remember the voters, you in a majority supported consolidating some millages, and that created somewhat of a savings when we took a health unit and mosquito, added animal control to make one millage. So I'm just sharing with you that we have, in fact, tried to do some things here and there, in addition to no new hires, in addition to not filling unfilled positions, and we know we've had to cut some departments significantly, and no parish capital projects. I often tell people, I said it in the sheriff walked in in the last meeting we were in. Last year, I was the one who had to call the sheriff and tell him, we're not going to be able to give you any money for capital at the jail this year. The problem is, I put my foot in my mouth and I say, I'm going to try to get it back for you next year. But guess what? I got to go to him this year and tell him, Sheriff, we're not going to be able to give you any capital money again this year. And when you got inmates stuffing linen in the toilets and backing up the sewer, the parish of Lafayette got to pay to go fix that. And when the HVAC unit goes down, as Bruce said, the parish of Lafayette has to pay to fix that. And at one time, when I first got on this council, we used to spend a million dollars in prescription drugs just in the jail. So when someone goes to jail with diabetes, HIV positive, high blood pressure, hypertension, that becomes ours. Whether we agree with it or not, regardless of where they're at, those are the type of things that I just wanted to kind of share to give you a great idea of what we're dealing with. So you had something else, Bruce?
I just wanted to add, I've had some constituents come to me and say, well, why don't we just annex the entire parish? Everybody take in a portion of the parish? Well, that actually does not eliminate the needs for covering parish government. Parish has the obligations of funding the jail, the district attorney, the courthouse. Those obligations, those mandates don't go away just because everything is incorporated. And the most significant part, or the negative aspect of that suggestion, is when you incorporate the entire parish, you do away with the very minimal sales tax base that we have from the unincorporated area. And that sales tax is what we use to primarily fund the general fund.
Thank you. So with that said, we're going to now move to item number two. So I'm going to ask Joseph, could you please read item number two, please?
Public comment on suggestions and recommendations related to parish revenues.
Thank you. What we're going to do is like we do in council meetings, everyone who filled out a blue card will be given the opportunity to speak. If you filled one out with just a suggestion and not willing to speak, it will be acknowledged that that card was provided to the clerk. As I indicated earlier, the five-minute rule will be in effect to give everyone an opportunity and to try to keep everyone here until only a reasonable time. Again, remind you that this is about the parish of Lafayette, not the city of Lafayette. There may be, there may be a chance that one of these members here could answer a question, but we did not invite the departments here who are the government's professionals in the field to address any issues. But if there is a question presented, every question is being recorded, every question is being written down, and that will be associated with your card and your name, and a response will be provided to you in writing or with a direct phone call. So we really here to listen. And we've taken up approximately 43 minutes of our time thus far, so I at least want to give that amount of time to the people plus some. So we really would like to just listen at this point. This isn't going to really be an opportunity for debate, but if it's something that maybe can be addressed, we'll give it a shot. So with that said, first speaker, please.
Adam Chapman.
Veronica, was your mic on? It sounded, and by the way, I apologize, you could actually come to either podium, and if someone is unable to stand while they speak or need, there's a mic right in the center as well, but you could use either podium on either side. Yes, sir.
All right, good evening. Adam Chapman, I'm the marketing director with I-Land Man. I brought this, the sheet she's passing out here, if you want to take a look at that. As y'all have mentioned a few times, a big part of, of what's been going on with our cuts that we've had to have over quite a long time, especially when you mentioned 10 years of dwindling budgets, really puts into perspective what I'm going to show you here. And I'd like to offer the suggestion or the idea that perhaps all the money is not out there, but there seems to be some more money that, that we could be collecting to help, you know, bolster our revenues. And what I'm looking at here today is property tax exemptions that are going on throughout the parish. The first page, this is from the assessor, Mr. Como, and this is broken down by movable property and real property for the year 2015. I don't have the 2016 numbers just yet, but for example, it would include some new projects like Costco that has a property tax abatement that's pretty significant, along with a few others. And what I'm really curious to see is, you know, if, if this committee or perhaps a more specific committee would take a closer look at these exemptions going forward, that, that you can tell are some pretty significant numbers. Just these listed here account for about $3.2 million in property taxes not collected in the year 2015. Based on the addition of Costco and probably a number of other properties, that number would rise pretty significantly. And it's my understanding that there are some other different types of exemptions that are going on locally that we could take a look at. So, you know, rather than raising taxes or cutting anything else, it seems like there's some more revenue out there that we could be taking in that right now we're exempting. And I know the, the temptation is to say that this is in the, in the, the idea of economic development or promoting growth, creating jobs and things like that. But these exemptions have been going on for, for more than 10 years, while at the same time, the budget seems to be dwindling. So I would offer that perhaps the exemptions aren't creating the revenues that we hoped by bringing in new companies or big businesses and upping sales taxes or property revenues or anything like that, that maybe we're letting more walk out the door than we're collecting in return. And I left the names off of these or have company names for every one of these that's listed here, but I left those off the list just so we wouldn't, you know, get stuck on them. But you're going to see if you use those account numbers and I, or I have the information, that these are some big companies. These are multi-million dollar, billion dollar companies that we have locally that we're allowing to get these exemptions. And, you know, not to say that, that they can't afford it or they should have to pay it because we say so, but it, you know, it's a big company who's getting a break. And in the times that we seem to be in where we got a cut and, and things are getting harder and harder, maybe we need to take another look at that and, and level out this playing field. So you can see that on that first page. The second page comes from another group called Together Louisiana, and this is a large coalition of religious organizations and nonprofits that, that pay attention to this exact same topic of tax exemptions and tax fairness in the state Louisiana. This is their version of sort of the same analysis that's kind of broken down into a more digestible way. You can see their number is actually closer to $4.7 million of lost revenue, parish property taxes not being collected. So even though there's a big gap in there, and I couldn't tell you exactly why, I guess the concern I have is that we don't know. And maybe we don't know exactly how much we are exempting out there in the, in the marketplace that we really need to find out. So I'm really requesting that we take a specific look at this and gather up all of the different types of exemptions, whether they're property taxes or direct property tax exemptions or special financing districts and things like that, and, and come up with a report that's got exactly what we've got out there and maybe how we can address it. And kind of as it relates to that, a change that's happened sort of recently is that the governor had an executive order, I think it's called JBE 26, that has now put the approval authority on the local taxing boards to approve or deny these sorts of exemptions, many of which are actually coming down from the state. So they can come to you with the proposal and the city council, the sheriff, the school board, and I forget who else, all must agree that these exemptions go through. And perhaps that's an opportunity to say no and, and put some of this money back in our pockets.
Just, just to be clear, the, on your second page, the top portion, that 4.7 that's identified by Together Louisiana, that's more in comparison to your first page. And then the bottom section, that's a whole different report on the second page?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The bottom section of the second page, where you identify a lot of the government entities, that's separate and aside report from that top portion of Together Louisiana. You said it came in with 4.7.
I think the bottom on that second page is the breakdown of what each of those entities are out of that 4.7 million.
Okay.
It's breaking it down more into the different specific areas. So the school board would be losing out on 1.8 million of the 4.7 million. So that's just the breakdown.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, just to make it a little easier to understand.
Okay, Mr. Como.
First of all, Mr. Chapman, thank you for doing the homework. It's, it's appreciated. But you made, I think, a significant comment toward the end of your presentation is, what do we have control over in terms of property tax exemptions? A large number of these exemptions come down from the state, and we have no choice. Now, can we address that? Yes, we can ask for legislation to allow us, as you mentioned about the governor's proposal, more jurisdiction, more say-so over what we do. But until we have that authority, we're limited. But having said that, it doesn't prevent us from trying to identify what indeed do we have control. So thank you for the suggestion.
And as far as I know, the executive order is in place so that, you know, I guess as they come forward, you'll, you'll have them put in front of you with a little more power. On, at the same note, you know, on a more localized level, things like the Industrial Development Board or LIDA or some of these other groups that also have the power to grant these exemptions, they operate on their own, but they often come to the council for, for approval or for, you know, a recommendation. So that is an opportunity, you know, to express to those bodies that are not governed in the same way, that we don't approve maybe, you know, on some of these projects.
Case by case. I'm going to just address one issue for you. You asked if another group can look at this, this would be the group to look at it. And it will be looked at.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
And as a matter of fact, Veronica, Joseph or someone double check the executive order to see if in fact, legislation has been passed or if there's some order in place with those authorizations of approving exemptions at the local level, please. Next speaker.
Tim Supple.
Well, I'm going to second what Mr. Chapman said because I've, you guys know, I've done a lot, a lot of research.
a lot, a lot of research on all this stuff and these exemptions, and I've been before this council many, many times asking you not to give those exemptions. I've asked you not to grant or approve or endorse the exemptions of property taxes. The last one we did was where Costco is developed. That's gonna be over $700,000 a year right there for ten years. We asked this council, we asked the council on Park Place, which finally got dropped, but you did approve that, this very council. And the executive order is in place, and the governor has signed it, so it's been there. But the very people that you've put on the board in, in Lafayette are the ones who are approving these tax exemptions. So you have a ton of power to stop it now. And so I will tell you this, you do not have a revenue problem, period. You have a tax exemption problem. You're exempting people. You're exempting specific people under the guise that it's economic development. If it were working, we wouldn't be where we are today. If the exemptions were designed to increase economic development, that would increase sales taxes, which would increase property taxes. So you would not have it. The annexation that y'all have been doing, Lafayette, Broussard, all of them, is exactly right. You're grabbing the parish money. So it's your own annexation and your own acts of the councils here and in those towns. You have no problem. You've just decided to exempt people, and not exempt people for any other reason than you think it works. We just got through with a study by Charles Marion with Strong Towns. Charles Marion tells you, in order to make up the property tax difference, you're gonna have to raise property taxes an average of $8,000 per house in the parish. Eight thousand. It's not sustainable. He's told you to stop what you're doing. We paid for this study, and it's ignored. At the same time that we passed comprehensive planning, literally the same month, where we said no more box stores, this council endorsed the exemptions for where Costco is. Now Costco didn't get a penny of it. All it did was raise the value of that land. That land was taxed at $180 per year, property taxes, sixty acres. It sold for around 20 to 25 million dollars. It was paying $180 a year property taxes. It is now paying zero property taxes. That's what y'all endorsed. So yes, if you, you are right. If you keep doing it the same thing you've been doing, you're gonna have to raise taxes. There's no doubt about that. But you know the old saying, when you find yourself in a hole, quit digging. The comprehensive plan is not gonna work. None of these things are gonna work, 'cause they're not based on any economics. You're right now talking about subsidizing some more stuff downtown. With what? With tax money. There's a rule in, in economics. If you have to subsidize it, it means it's not economical. So my suggestion is, like Mr. Chapman said, you get a committee together, and I guarantee you, we'll find you $10 million in exemptions that y'all have either approved or endorsed. You don't need to raise these people's taxes. You just need to start collecting the taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Nakem?
Mr. Supple, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm, I'm just curious, I have a question. Where's your, where on the getting rid of the exemptions, I, I definitely see, see that right here. Where's your stance on eliminating vendors' comp and start doing occupational license?
What's that?
What, what would be your opinion on, 'cause you, you stated that no more exemptions, like get rid of all the exemptions and all the development. I mean, I agree, Costco...
Get rid of development. I said get rid of exemptions.
Okay, well, exemptions. So to get rid of exemptions, I agree. I mean, I think Walmart and Costco, I mean, those big players are gonna come regardless. We're Lafayette, right? Well, one of the other things that this council had tried bringing up and got beat up pretty bad was to make an effort and collect what is actually owed to the parish and the city. So what would be your stance on eliminating vendors' comp?
I don't have a sense. I don't know enough about it. I don't know enough about vendor comps. Honestly, I don't.
Okay. Or occupational license, 'cause...
I, I don't know enough about it to speak to that.
Okay. I was just curious, 'cause a, a lot of, one of the things I've noticed when I got on the council that I didn't think was right was that some businesses, retailers, dealerships, vendors' compensation, the state had, did away with it, and so did Broussard, Scott Youngs, and the small towns got rid of it. And basically, the understanding of vendors' comp is those businesses get to keep a portion of the sales tax that should be coming to our government for services.
That's my understanding too, but I don't know enough about it.
So do, in your opinion, do you think we should eliminate that too?
You know, here's, here's my thing. If you create all taxes equal to everyone, then you won't have any problems. The problem is, we have, we have some people who pay taxes and some people who don't.
I agree.
It's that simple.
I just was curious.
And, and this council, and the council for the last ten years, has been on a rampage of doing this. We've given away, and I guarantee, I can go find you 10 million in taxes in a month, of things you've given away that you can stop today. You think you don't have the power, but you do, because every one of these boards, you appoint. You appoint every one of these boards.
Now, a lot of these exemptions, you...
And thi- this is just property taxes. Right now, we're only talking about property tax exemptions, but there are tons of these exemptions that go all around, and you have the power to stop it. But every time we come up here and we say, "Don't give, don't increase the value of the land that's not paying property taxes," you do it anyway. Another thing I would suggest is you go to the state and you say, "We no longer want you to tell us what to value land at in our parish." We should do that, because agricultural land, of which there's some 5,000 acres of agricultural designated land in the city limits, which, which pays taxes based on an average of $180 per acre, which means they pay less than a dollar per acre in property taxes. That's where the Costco went. I can give you the, the property right behind it. The, all that empty property is being, is being assessed at a, at $180 an acre. Really? Because the way property taxes work is you pay for the, you pay one tax, 1% of the value of the property, 1.5% of the value of the improvements. So if you have a, let me put it this way, if you had a muffler shop right next to where Costco is, you would be paying, before Costco was there, you'd be paying 10 times more property taxes than all that land. 10 times more. So yeah, if you keep going down this road that you're on, it's never gonna end, because it is a, you're digging your own hole.
Thank you very much, Mr. Supple. I say thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I'm, I got it down, again, tax exempt, like the first speaker, addressing the tax exemption issue. Next speaker, please?
Robert Gerard.
My name is Robert Gerard. I'm a 61-year resident of rural Lafayette Parish. You know, y'all know me. I've been to a lot of y'all committee meetings in the past and brought y'all information, and I just wanted to come tonight, kinda seemed like y'all finishing up, and a few things to say. One thing is, it like always gets me, is we gotta keep in mind, Mr. Como talked about city and rural and everything, we all live in Lafayette Parish, and I wish we can get to the mindset and rework from there. It's like the, the charter just needs to be redone from the get-go, that it's all Lafayette Parish, and yes, they have the municipalities in the parish and everything, but the municipalities are in Lafayette Parish. Talks about city, money can't be used in the parish, but last week I saw parish prisoners cleaning the streets in downtown Lafayette. So shouldn't that not be allowed, if, if it goes both ways? The, the charter just needs to be redone and looked from the beginning, because people in the city use parish services, people in the parish use city services, and this will never end. Like I said, we got years down the road of looking at budgets with no money. It'll never end. Last week, there was a report that the city budget was fine, but it's the parish that didn't have any money. And it's always been made out that the parish didn't have no money, but like you mentioned annexation early and stuff, does, all the municipalities annexed, every time a business pops up, they annex it. So they're basically robbing from the parish legally through the way the charter's written, and then it'd be like if I have a bunch of rent houses, and I'd go in them and steal everybody's paycheck when they get it, and then go fuss at them while you're not paying your rent. That's what, that's what's happening with the parish right now. I mean, the district attorney's sitting here, he works for the parish and the city, but his money comes from the parish, not from the city. He's been cut. I mean, it's affecting everybody with all services, and I don't think he'll change until the charter's just redone with a different mindset and attitude that we all live in Lafayette Parish. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Castillo?
Short statement. I, I wanna remind Mr. Supple, we're not here to raise anybody's taxes. I said before you started talking, and I'm gonna tell you again after you finish talking, that mindset, that statement you said earlier was sticking a lot of minds. That's the kinda stuff we don't need. We're here just to get ideas. We appreciate your comments, Mr. Chapman's comments is what we're here for, okay? Just to clarify that. We're not here to raise nobody's taxes. We're here for information. Thank you.
And the, the recommendation for the charter fix is that's, I, I think that's something that needs to be looked at. That takes a lot of maneuvering, that has been addressed about the last three or four years, haven't made a whole lot of progress. But the one unique thing about it is that the city of Lafayette and the unincorporated area of Lafayette is the only true partners. So the, the example about the prisoners, that's a contract that is through the sheriff's office, where the sheriff was able to put out workers to do some things, but that is the only two governments. When the other municipalities kinda opt out, if you would, or stayed their individual selves, the city of Lafayette then became the only partner with the unincorporated area. That's why our council is made up the way it is, and the city of Lafayette don't have its own council, for instance. Broussard has a council, Youngsville has a council, et cetera, but the city of Lafayette does not. We have a consolidated council. So that's the only place you're gonna see that type of, I guess, working together as opposed to the other municipalities. Next speaker, please?
Rick Trout.
First name was Ray?
Rick, yeah, R I C. First of all, thank you for giving the public an opportunity to, to make suggestions and recommendations. Hopefully, the collective wisdom of everybody here will come up with something that will help us to get to the point where we need to get. I am a citizen of this community. I'm here because of that. I want the greatest things to happen for our community. I have, however, a business concept, so if that does not fit in with the agenda tonight, I withdraw that, but I did wanna talk about it a little if, if that was permissible.
Yes, sir. Let's, let's get started and see if we can make it fit.
Well, this is a proprietary nature, so I cannot tell you a whole lot, but I can certainly tell you enough to whet your appetite. This will fit the city or the parish, it doesn't matter, or collectively both of them. I work with a company called Energie, S-E-N-G-R-I, not D-W-I, and we've been doing this successfully with several entities, even Fortune 500 companies. And we've just recently been doing it with municipalities and having great success. So I'll give you some bullet points about how this works or what it does for an entity, any organization with more than 500 employees, this could work. You have to get to that kinda number to make it work, but I can see the math of how this works, you'll understand it. We will take away, we will reduce one of your largest liabilities that you have in your budget. And just saying that alone would probably get your interest, but again, what I'm hoping for is to be able to get to another meeting where I can share proprietary information. I just can't do all that right now. The results that we have and our timelines of what we look at and the history that we have shows that this will bring a addition to your budget, if you look at it, extrapolated across our whole history of $1 million per 1,000 employees. So the parish probably doesn't have that many, but at least they have 500, I think, that it would work with, and certainly the city has more than that. Again, we're talking about the parish, but it will work with both. This, this financial hedge strategy will reduce the workload of several employees. It will increase employee morale, and it does not require you to change any vendors or any relationships that you have. Again, we have been doing this successfully for five years, and in the last year, our penetration within organizations of significant size have been great. We have been able to work with, with all types of organizations over 500. And for your particular reference, the city of Cincinnati is one of our clients, and we have several cities of all sizes, over 500, and the state of Texas currently seriously considering this financial hedge strategy. And again, I wish I could tell you more, but I can't do it in this venue.
I, I tell you what, you, you, you've said enough, like you said, to kinda moisturize the mouth, if you would. This is probably what I would suggest, if, if, and you did say you, you live in Lafayette?
I do live in Lafayette.
Okay, that, that's a, that's a great start in itself. Can you leave us a card?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I do have one question for you. Have you attempted to meet with anybody with our government before?
I have spoke about this briefly with Mayor Robideau.
Okay.
And he had, he expressed an interest in learning more.
Perfect.
We were trying to be able to set up an appointment with, with some of the right people.
Okay. If, if you could, leave your card with our clerk, and I, I myself will follow up with Mayor Robideau, and maybe something could be set up where we could get into it a little bit more in-depth. And I understand the proprietary nature of some of this, I get it, but it seemed like you got something that could save us money. I think we could meet the 500-plus employee threshold, and you did say a million dollars for every 10 employees?
Million dollars for every 1,000 employees.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm just joking.
Yeah, that would be great. That would be even more.
If you could, if you could leave your card, certainly I could assure you'll follow up.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Amber Robinson.
And again, I just wanna remind, both mics are on. Sometimes people just love this mic here. I don't know if it's, if we look better from that side or not, but...
There's more of you on this side this evening. Hi, I wanna thank the council for this opportunity to, for the, for the community to come out and give some ideas on the budget. And Bruce, this is your second time seeing me this week, and I'm glad you let me in the building tonight, after the heated tree discussion. I guess, I, I hope you had a lot of substantial emails, because there are, were a lot more people for your tree meeting than there are here tonight. So I have two points to make tonight, and I'm basing them on the fact that while we operate on separate budgets, we are one community. So a lot of what we see our Lafayette Parish mates go through, because I live here in the city, like with our flooding and everything, that affects friends and family and people that we care about. So I don't really think, see those things and think, oh, well, that doesn't really affect me, because my budget is just fine. Those people live in Lafayette Parish, and that's, that's their budget. So I'm gonna take a slightly different, unpopular approach here.
Excuse me, Ms. Robinson, could you pull your mic down just a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the recorder could pick it up a little better. Thank you.
I know that City Parish President Robideau is going to approach you, or I've been told that, and he's going to ask you to place the millages back on the ballot for the fall election. And I think that when he does that, that the council should put them back on the ballot for the voters to, to vote for, and that not only should the council do that, they should then have the responsibility of letting the people know that, what those millages pay for, because they've obviously forgotten. millages paid for, because they've obviously forgotten what they paid for. Or maybe they never knew in the first place. Because I think a lot of people were caught off guard when those millages did not renew, and then they found out very suddenly what they actually paid for. So a lot of our infrastructure that the city uses, like our courthouse, and things that are important, like the police, or like the jail, that's something that affects the people in the city. So I think that those things need to be placed back on the ballot. And I think the council needs to hit the street and make sure that the voters know what those millages actually paid for. Because I think that people hear taxes, and they just automatically shut down. And not everybody knew exactly what they paid for. That being said, I do live in the city limits, but many of these things affect me. They affect my family, friends, and people that I care about. And so I'll take this opportunity to point out that the waste on either side of the budget should not be tolerated. And while we watch the parish side of things suffer, it is not a time to be flippant on the city side of things. So I'll take this time to remind the council that our own city marshal has been using taxpayer money to pay his legal fees and pay a settlement that he was-
Ms. Robinson-
Give me one second. I've got two minutes, so just give me one minute, because I-
No, no, Ms. Robinson, I'm gonna give you your time, but you can't talk about the marshal.
No. Okay, and that's fine, but I'm just gonna say that he's going-
No, no, Ms. Robinson, now look, we're gonna remain, we set the rules in advance. What we're looking for is recommendations.
Okay.
Not anything related, let me finish.
Okay.
Not anything related to the city of Lafayette. What happens in these types of settings is when we deviate from the focus, we never get to where we need to be.
Okay, well, I just want to, I just want to remind everybody that when, when other departments come and they ask for additional money, whether they're with the city, when they're with the city, that it may not solve the parish woes. I don't know how you can justify it to the parish when you give additional funds to something when, when the parish is suffering. I'll just finish it up that way.
Yeah. And that's all taken very well. And it's, it's, it's some, it's simple, but it's a little complex. But the budgets are totally separate.
Well, and that being said, I will go back to what, what the gentleman said earlier, which is we are not a true consolidated government, when we look at it that way. And so I don't know why we call ourselves Lafayette Consolidated Government when we're not a Lafayette Consolidated Government. And that is a fact. So I would say, go, then my suggestion is to go back to the charter and redo it, so that we are a true Lafayette Consolidated Government. Because right now, we are not.
And those things are being considered, and it has been tried and failed once, but it's still coming back.
Well, I understand that that's probably hard, and when you sit down, it doesn't go very far. But when you make up your mind to make it a true Lafayette Consolidated Government, then you sit down and you do it, and you don't stop until it's done.
That's right.
So.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please. Okay.
Gus Rizende.
Okay, I'll take this side.
Thank you, balancing.
How are you guys doing tonight? I'd like to start off, before I get in my soapbox, I'd like to, Mr. Jade, I don't want to get on your bad side, but when, when, when Mr. Bruce says that we potentially have inadequate property taxes, and we compare to other progressive towns such as Monroe, and all the respect to Monroe, I think we need to look back in the, deep in the mirror and figure out a way to potentially restructure how property taxes in this town. And this is coming from a guy that owns six businesses in town. And maybe my business partners will not be happy to hear that I'm potentially in favor of raising taxes. But when it comes to raise taxes for me, is how we're gonna reinvest into our town, not how we're going to just fill up the holes. So when it comes to reinvesting to our town, one thing that I have learned in 16 years in Lafayette, I'm from Brazil originally, and Brazil is full of jails, with overcrowded jails. So it scares me badly when I hear that this is happening in Lafayette in the United States. But going back to reinvesting into our town, doesn't mean just reinvesting financially, but reinvesting with progressive ordinances, reinvesting with progressive, well-thought-out, best practices from other cities, mid-sized cities in this country. And I'm talking about downtown. I'm not talking about giving downtown more money, which obviously will be great. There's a lot of things we can do in downtown. But I'm talking about, once and for all, sitting down with a lot of the administrators in the city, that I know there are a lot of capable people working in LCG that gets it. They know the importance of the core, the urban core of this town. And until every city consummate and woman in this town can recognize that we can make a change by improving the vibrancy of downtown Lafayette, and quit looking at the nightlife as a problem, but a financial opportunity, I think we're gonna get very far. Couple examples, short-term solutions. There are three parking lots owned by the city right now. They're unmanaged, on a nightly basis. I suggest we'll put a pay station in those stations, in those parking lots, one being Rosa Parks. Name one progressive town that has a cultural entertainment district that does not charge parking at night. There is uncivil behavior. It's basically free-for-all in those parking lots. There are drinking, there are tailgate parties going on. And what happens is, they walk in adventure into Jefferson Street and create the mess that we find sometimes on the weekends. And what happens in the media is the bar problem, it's karma's problem, it's whatever business's problems. No, the problems are on the streets. So we can solve, and we can probably generate $250,000 a year if we have the courage to implement a parking pay system at night. Second, Jefferson Street, from my understanding, there are 200 digital meters in storage, ready to be installed now. Why are we not charging the meter at night, just like any other-